Like on talk radio left side of the nation. Me and Dominique De Prima go way back. Tired smiley making sure the station stays black. Discussing all the issues in our community. We're hosting black and brown and others find unity. So let's talk about it. Maybe we can improve it. Digital underground always down with the movement. So we tune in. The first thing is first with the queen of black talk radio. Dominique De Prima, go sis.
K B L A Talk fifteen eighty. Good morning and God bless. I'm Dominique De Prima. This show is called First Things First. And my first thing every single day, giving Thanksgiving praises and asking for blessings from God, asking for the blessings of the ancestors and the elders and getting it going. Why is she talking so fast? I think I'm going to talk faster and faster and faster as election day approaches. And then hopefully we can all exhale. Well, if you're not paying attention, just, you know, just get grounded with my vibe because I'm like all wound up and yeah, just all wired on this election. So this is what's going on around here. This is how we do it. Hour one, we look to the local, what's happening on the left coast. Hour two, we go national, international and beyond. In the third hour, we do a deep dive with a person or persons of interest. We are in election mode, so we could just kind of sort of throw all that out the window. But we will be having some interesting conversations today. Of course, it's a wealth building Wednesday, so we'll focus in on a black owned or BIPOC or small or woman owned business or socially innovative enterprise. Okay, good, I can't even talk today. And then we are going to be hearing from one of the city council candidates who wants to be your council person for district eight. We are going to be hearing from Dr. David Turner, who will recap the incredible presentation that I attended last night. It was the people's budget findings and they were presented and analyzed for the mayor of Los Angeles, Karen Bass. And it was just a great meeting, lots and lots of people, community people, community organizers, the mayor's team rolling deep. So it was very, very powerful meeting and we'll hear from Dr. David Turner, who was one of the main presenters in that meeting. So that should be, it, it promises to be quite compelling, actually. How the people want to spend the people's money. And we got a lot more going on. So buckle your seatbelt. I think we got a school board candidate. We got you eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty, eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty. That is the number. You are welcome in anytime because this is a conversation, not a monologue. And happy Black History Month. Let's say it while we can, even though we celebrate it every day. I do have a partner in politics in studio with me today. He spent the first part of his career as a political staffer for elected officials and labor organizations. And lately he's doing strategic consultation to individuals seeking to run for office and organizations empowering their communities through policy change. And I'm really happy to have him in studio with me on the YouTube's Shannon Lawrence. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming in. I know you're busy. It's, it's election season, so I appreciate you taking the time out to wake up early and come down to the studio.
Anytime, anytime for you.
So you know, okay, I like to start with what's good, but I probably won't right now because the first question in my mind has to do with this voter turnout, right? Because the election is already underway. You can vote right now at any voting center if you're in LA. And what, what we're getting right back so far is very measly at this point.
Yeah. And you know, I think part of it is that we could attribute it to, and this is a very quiet election. You know, but also I think we can, I think there's a couple of things. One, you know, the cost of campaigning is becoming astronomical. I mean, just the, the, you know, if this was business, the customer acquisition cost, so the cost that it takes to reach a voter in terms of what mailers costs, what, you know, the reality is that the, you know, the couple of things happened, a couple, one thing happened a couple of years ago where, you know, there's no such thing as free interns anymore. So everyone who's working on your.
Right, right, right. I remember that because we used to have lots of interns at the radio stations. Yeah, and, and somebody sued, I think it was Fox or something. Yeah.
Yeah, so you gotta, you gotta pay every single campaign and they should be paid. Don't get me wrong.
True that, true that.
But it costs money. AB five had an impact. So even, even when it comes to, you used to be able to hire just independent consultants, quote unquote.
Right.
You can't do that anymore. I mean, independent contractors, you can't do that. Everyone has to be an employee. And so you have to, all of the related costs with actually hiring an employee, the payroll taxes and, and all of that stuff, it, it, it nickels and dimes campaigns to the point to where they become a small businesses, right? And so the cost of doing business is just, is, is, is becoming unaffordable. And you know, for black candidates in particular, you know, raise of money has never been a strong suit for, for black camp, for candidate, for campaigns for black candidates. And so the ability to raise the money just becomes harder and harder. So, and the secretary of state frankly is they've, they're spending a measly amount of money as they, as they have in the past to even just educate people in the fact that there is an election. So.
Yeah. Is that our budget crisis or is that just they don't do it? It's just not something that they take on?
I wouldn't say it's a budget crisis. I think, you know, a few years ago, when the state of California went to a hundred percent vote by mail, there was a huge amount of, some three hundred million dollars that was spent in order to just educate Californians on you're going to get a ballot at home, you're going to be able to vote at home.
Right.
Covid, a lot of that, the money during covid, that, that, that budget was sustained, if not increased to let people know it is safe. This is a safe way to vote, yada, 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 and participate. Now that we're out of covid, now that, you know, we've been through a couple of election cycles, it's not a budget crisis. It's just not a budget priority to educate people to vote.
Which is, which is odd, but I, I think you're right. A lot of people aren't tracking that we're even in an election, which is weird to me. But at least you have a long time to vote. You can vote every single day until Tuesday.
Right. Yeah, vote centers opened up on the 24th. And the beauty of it, I think in, in, in LA county in particular, is no longer, we don't have precincts anymore.
That's, it feels weird, but.
So you can go, so you can be at work and you realize, oh my goodness, I, I have a few minutes. Let me go find the closest vote center and I can go vote. You know, we even, you can register same day now. I mean, there are so many opportunities to participate and there's so many barriers have been knocked down. We just, we just need people to take advantage of and participate. I mean, even little things, right? Like if you move during the election cycle or before an election cycle, when you move and you do your change of address for USPS, it, it can trigger your change of address for voter registration. And so we make things easy. We just need people to participate.
Right. And I mean, speaking of making things easy, what a lot of folks don't pay attention to because we're used to a voter registration deadline is that you could register the same day you vote.
Right.
Even if it's not election day, like any day that you go to the polls, you can just pull up, register and then vote, which is new, I mean, new ish, right? It wasn't like that when I started voting.
No, no, I mean, yeah. And you know, we, I think one of the things that has to happen, man, is, is, you know, we, we hear so much about what's wrong with our society, what's wrong with government. The reality is that voting is the solution and it's always been a solution. And it's always been the, the way that our community has been able to be empowered, whether it be, you know, during, in the, in the early nineteen hundreds when we were able to elect people that look like us to Congress. And so we actually had representation up until, you know, putting political pressure on, on political leaders during the civil rights movement. Up until now, I mean, being able to elect people, whether, you know, we may like them this year, may not like them next year, but the bottom line is that we had a voice and we were able to change things that, that we want to, that we want to change. So.
Yeah. And I think part of the, the reason that happens is because we say it is, it's a solution and people hear it's the solution. It's, it's one of the tools that we have. It's not the only thing, but it's a thing. And so that's a great reason to, you know, to track it, to pay attention to it. And I also think, I also think some of it is the rain, like people don't want to go out anywhere and do a thing, even though you could fill out your ballot and drop it in the county drop box or put in the mail with no stamp on it. But a lot of us like to go to the polls. I'm that way. I like to, I'll take my filled out mail in ballot to the polls and just drop it off there, even though I could put it in a mailbox near my house or I could put it in the county drop box, but they're by the library, they're by the park. No, I want to see some lady, hardworking poll worker take it and put it in the little thing. That's just me. I'm thinking maybe the rain, I know it's a slow election, but I'm hoping that because of important issues like the district attorney's race, which is really key, especially for, you know, low income voters, for black voters, for Latina voters, that at the last minute, you know, we'll do that. And it does worry me because I think a lot of the elders do mail in their ballots, but at the last minute, I'm hoping, you know, the unlikely voters will turn up.
Yeah, and I think the other part too is that I do think that, I mean, I like to go to the polls myself, especially like when my kids were much younger, there was something of our, I remember, I remember taking my kids into the voting booth and letting them punch the ballot for Barack Obama. And I, and there was a, there was a moment with that, right? So that they can participate in history.
Yeah, I used to force my kid to come to, to the polling place with me. He didn't love it, but.
Well, my kids would get excited.
I bet he knows how to vote.
But, and what was really cool about it was that, you know, the, the kids would get the I voted stickers afterwards.
Right.
And so they did make it kind of fun, right? And now you get your sticker in the mail with your mail in ballot. But, but I also think it, you know, it, the, the, the conversation is different because now you can sit at home around the table, you know, whether it be, you know, maybe right before dinner, right after dinner, you know, have some downtime. You can sit around as a family and kind of discuss the issues and, and talk about it. You could do research right.
Just have a big old fight. Just have a fight about it. A little political discourse.
I mean, that never hurts either.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's not a lot of heated stuff on this ballot, but I think the DA's race is one of them. You know, is probably the most heated. And it's, there's 12 candidates. And in case you haven't been paying attention, you can go to kbla1580.com. The candidate interviews are there. They're grouped for you by category of whatever office to make it easy for you. And you can listen for yourself and check out, check out what they had to say about themselves. This is particularly useful, I think, when it comes to judges, judicial candidates. Because when you hear them talk, oh boy, it's really telling.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, you know, that's such a, that's probably one of the most consequential races on any ballot and yet the quietest. We don't talk about it. You know, I personally wish we would put more emphasis as a community on, on those races that, you know, one of the things that we, that we talk about is that it's, it's an all male ballot, not M A L E, but M A I L in terms of.
Yeah.
You know, you're not going to see commercials, you're not going to hear radio spot, well, rarely you do.
You better hear radio spots. No, yeah, I, I hear you. Well, hold that thought because we're going to continue this conversation. You're invited in eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty, eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty. We are K B L A Talk fifteen eighty and we are your election information station.
She's reclaiming her time on K B L A Talk fifteen eighty. More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
At K B L A Talk fifteen eighty, we do black history every single day. In fact, as the only black talk radio station west of the Mississippi, we are black history. Our annual Black History Month luncheon is fast approaching and we want to be sure to give you ample time to get your company, organization, church or group to join us at this year's celebration on the last day of the month, Thursday, February 29th at noon. Last year, we honored iconic local black media personalities, including Pat Harvey, Jim Hill, Mark Brown, Beverly White, Sandy Banks and Pat Prescott, and raised $20,000 in scholarships. This year, we're honoring black Hollywood creatives who have used their artistic genius as climate justice champions. At this year's luncheon, we will be showcasing and sharing their inspiring work on our big screen. Plus a scrumptious meal, live music, great company and lots of fun with your favorite K B L A Talk fifteen eighty hosts. So contact us today at info@smileyaudiomedia.com or call three two three two nine zero four six nine zero. That's info@smileyaudiomedia.com or call three two three two nine zero four six nine zero. We hope to see you Thursday, February 29th as we close out Black History Month. At K B L A Talk fifteen eighty, we've got your black.
What's that sound? That's the sound of Downy Unstoppable scent beads going into your washing machine and giving your clothes freshness that lasts all day long. There it is again. It's like music to your ears or more like music to your nose. That freshness is irresistible. Let's get a Downy Unstoppables bottle shake and now a sniff solo. Nice. Get six times longer lasting freshness plus odor protection with Downy Unstoppables in wash scent beads.
Eggs are a staple in our diets and there's only one egg with more delicious farm fresh taste plus superior nutrition. Eggland's Best. With more vitamins, including six times more vitamin D and 10 times more vitamin E, plus 25% less saturated fat than ordinary eggs. Available in so many delicious varieties, classic, cage free and organic. Eggland's Best, better taste, better nutrition, better eggs.
If you love to travel, Capital One has a rewards credit card that's perfect for you. With Venture X, earn unlimited double miles on everything you buy and turn everyday purchases into extraordinary trips. Plus receive premium travel benefits like access to over 1,300 airport lounges where you just check in and chill out. Open up a world of possibilities with Capital One. What's in your wallet?
Terms apply. Lounge access is subject to change. See capitalone.com for details.
Your ancestors' favorite radio station.
Radio station.
And your favorite morning show host. Let's get back to Dominique De Prima right now.
Right now, how blessed am I to have Shannon Lawrence with me in studio? An actual expert on these things like elections and how, what not to do, what to do. We do have some local races here that are, you know, I would say disproportionately impactful on the African American community. Council District 10 for the Los Angeles City Council, which is the one I live in, and CD eight. The incumbents, of course, Marquise Harris Dawson and Heather Hutt. The CD 10, which is currently occupied by Heather Hutt, is, has, you know, got a bunch of candidates running.
Yeah, yeah, they, you know, I, you know, races like that are always tough, right? Because, you know, I wouldn't say that there's a, I don't think there are any bad candidates in the race. And certainly I don't think there's a boogeyman in the race.
Okay, so I mean, that's, that's a good perspective. It's kind of, it's not like some other races. Let me put it that way. I, I hadn't thought of it that way, like it's, it's a no lose in a way is what you're saying? Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think all of them bring very different experiences. I think in all of them, but I will say this, I think everyone in that race genuinely cares about the community.
We're talking about 10?
Yes.
Okay.
They genuinely care and they want to do, they want to do the right thing. And I think for voters, I think that's, 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 that's good. That doesn't mean don't participate. You still should figure out who you like in that race, cast your vote. You know, you have six days left. If you feel that passionate, go volunteer on their campaigns and, and make your voice heard. But.
And you're talking about specifically CD eight and CD 10? Because I feel like there are some candidates in this race that are problematic. Not, not CD eight and CD 10 necessarily, but overall.
Yeah, I think over a CD 14 and that, that's crazy.
Right, right. Talking about disgraced races, anti-renter, anti-indigenous, anti-LGBTQ, and still he stands.
Yeah.
KDL. Yeah, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of folks running in that race. So I definitely probably talking about a runoff, right?
Yeah, it's a couple, yeah, definitely you have a couple of assembly members in that race, some community activists. And, you know, but the thing that's so, I think the thing that's craziest is that, you know, this is why elections are important and why local, local elections are most important because his constituents love him still. I mean, in spite of.
Well, you know, some of them, I mean, you saw the LA Times polling, you know, a lot of them wanted him out of, out of office, love or no love. I mean, yeah, there are some that do. And the thing that really irks me about that is that I feel like he is using a blatantly anti-black vibe to get reelected. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And, and he's not running against anybody black, but he's running against blackness.
There is one black candidate.
Yeah, that's right.
It's an African American woman. I forgot her name.
Yep, that's right. There is one, but I mean, for the most part, it's Latino versus Latino, but he's running against the idea of us.
Yeah, and you know, and I'll say this, I think one of the things that, that always challenged me is that, is this notion that, because to that point about anti-blackness, it's also a very pro immigrant stance, which is fine, but the challenge with that is that when we think about this city, it's about 40 different, it's about 40 different populations of people who have a larger population here in Los Angeles they do in, in their home countries.
Really?
Yeah, so.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So immigrants don't just come from south of, of, of the border. They come from literally from the Caribbean, from Africa, from everywhere. And we don't talk about that enough and we don't talk about that enough when it comes down to immigrant rights, when it comes down to immigrant equity and opportunities. Because to your point, those folks have darker skin, they have coarser hair, they, you know, all of these different things that really speak to, you know, black immigrants. And so I think, you know, raising that issue, I think is critically important. Not just over in the 14th, but I think in the city overall.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to also say that I think the race to unseat Nithya Raman is pretty shady. I mean, in, in my opinion, you've got police unions backing a candidate just to try to get revenge because she voted against these massive raises.
Right.
For LAPD, which, you know, a lot of progressives were applauding that. And I feel like even if you are not in her district, this is a person to, to support, whether it's door knocking or, or sending some money or whatever. She's got two opponents. She's got a deputy city attorney, a prosecutor, Ethan Weaver. That's where all the cop money is going. And his priority is to criminalize the homeless while he says get them off the streets. But we know what that means. And the other one is Leon Lev Baronian, who's a software engineer. But the threat is Ethan Weaver because he's got police union money. And I just hate that a candidate can be targeted like that for a vote that's in alignment with what we, the people voted in. It's the same situation in the district attorney's race.
Yeah, and I mean, let's be honest, is it really just about that cop vote? Or is it, or is it about representation on the city council and making sure that there is not representation of certain groups, of certain beliefs, of, of certain things, right? Comes dangerous when, to me, it's dangerous when you really try to snuff out the opinion of someone who you, who, and you categorize them to be an opponent. I think, I think in the conversation around, in that conversation, excuse me, I would welcome someone who challenges why I should not get the money that I deserve because it gives me an opportunity. It gives me an opportunity to try to justify it.
You must be a progressive. You, you mean, you don't mine a little sunshine? A little sanitizing sunshine on your, yeah, I mean, I think that's right. But when the challenge, when, you know, when your opinion and your vote, which is based on your understanding of what your voters want, and also, I mean, let's take, let's face it, progressives are being targeted.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And she's a progressive, you know, there is a progressive block in the city council. I think it's important that we keep one.
Right.
And, you know, I just, I just think she's, she's probably fighting the toughest battle right now for a city council seat.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I do think that they see her as an easy target, which is unfortunate. And but, you know, Nithya is also proven, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Raman has also proven herself to be a fighter. She's proven that she has the tenacity to stand toe to toe with anyone in opposition. She's a coalition builder. And so I think, I think because of that, she will make her message clear to voters in her district and I think they will reciprocate.
Yeah, it's an interesting perspective. I love this. Shannon Lawrence is here making us all feel a little less doomy and gloomy in what's been an otherwise pretty doomy, gloomy couple of weeks. Eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty, if you've got an opinion, even if you don't agree, because I too do not mind a little sanitizing sunshine in my day. Eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty, news, traffic, sports, then more on K B L A Talk fifteen eighty.
More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. A Republican lawmaker in Alabama has filed a bill that would protect providers of in vitro fertilization. State Senator Tim Nelson filed an IVF bill on Tuesday after the Alabama Supreme Court recently decided that frozen embryos were considered children. At least three Alabama providers have halted the fertility procedure since the ruling. The White House is slamming Donald Trump for suggesting black Americans can relate to him because of his multiple criminal indictments. The former president spoke in South Carolina late last week at an event for black conservatives and claimed black people like him because they see him as being discriminated against. Tuesday, White House Press Secretary Corrine Jean-Pierre called Trump's comments divisive and repugnant. And that's the latest. I'm Mike Moore from your 24 seven news source, the Black Information Network and B I N News.com.
The Crohn's and Cholitis Foundation has been at the forefront of inflammatory bowel disease research and care for over 50 years. Learn more about research, education and support at crohn'scholitisfoundation.org.
This is the K B L A Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
The Lakers and Clippers jumping up tonight at crypto.com. First game for both teams in three days. Both teams are also one and two since the All-Star break. Important game for the Lakers at 31 and 28. The Lakers are two and a half games out of the playoffs with 23 games left in the regular season. They need to get on the road pretty quick. The Clippers won't have Paul George tonight. He's missing his second straight game with a sore left knee. The Clippers are the home team, 7:00 PM tipoff on ESPN. Top five men's college basketball teams in this week's AP poll, Houston, Purdue, UConn, Tennessee and Marquette. Dodgers fans got a treat yesterday. Shohei Ohtani hit a two run homer in his first game with his new team. It's only spring training, but this is what Dodgers fans want to see from a guy with a 10 year, $700 million contract. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your K B L A Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richardson. More news, opinions and conversation when we come forward on K B L A Talk fifteen eighty.
Climate is killing us.
At K B L A Talk fifteen eighty, we believe that caring for the community means caring about the climate. You might've heard that we announced a pretty bold 12 month, $2 million campaign to do four things. Increase climate literacy, turn up the volume on communities of color in the climate conversation, connect everyday people with the resources they need to survive and thrive, and highlight frontline climate justice crusaders of color throughout this year. K B L A Talk fifteen eighty will be bringing you insightful interviews on all of our shows to help raise your climate IQ. Each quarter this year, we will also be hosting free climate events in various communities throughout the city with food, fun and forward thinking conversations. Thanks to partners like L A D W P, Metro, Caltrans, the Sierra Club, the California Community Foundation, the California Endowment, A Q M D, M W D and more. You'll also be hearing more about a couple of national town halls broadcasting live from Los Angeles, to which you will be invited. And we'll be rolling out a robust social media campaign on all our platforms, as well as an outdoor media campaign, all designed to educate, enlighten and empower you in our fight for climate justice.
We want cleaner air.
Caring about the community means caring about the climate. At K B L A Talk fifteen eighty, we believe that we really can change the world if we care enough.
J P Morgan Chase is building on the investments in California to help close the racial wealth gap and build a more equitable future. Visit jpmorganchase.com/racialequity and get the tools to help reach your financial goals.
Los Angeles County needs a new district attorney.
I'm Jeff Timorinsky and I'm running for district attorney. I have served as chief of the violent and organized crime section of the Los Angeles United States Attorney's Office. I've never lost a case. I have experience managing large teams of lawyers and staff and I've done it in the largest federal judicial district in the nation. I've been endorsed by civil rights attorney Connie Rice, by former LA County Supervisor Yvonne Braithwaite Burke, and by the New Frontier Democratic Club, the oldest and largest African American Democratic Club in California. I'm a lifelong Democrat. As your next district attorney, I'll do everything I can to make our community safer and reform our justice system for every community in Los Angeles.
Jeff Timorinsky, Democrat for District Attorney. Endorsed by the leaders we trust, our community can trust Jeff Timorinsky to stand up for us. Vote by March 5th. Paid for by Jeff Timorinsky for District Attorney 2024.
Thanks for waking up with Dominique De Prima on K B L A Talk fifteen eighty.
Shannon Lawrence is my guest. And you tell us, like if folks want it next time, because it's too late for this campaign, but if they want your help and you got, and we're kind of, we're being careful because there's folks that you're working with and so, you know, dis- know, disclosure, blah, blah, blah. We'd be ethical around here, not like them right-wing stations. Anyway, if they want to reach you, if they wanted to consult with you or hire you to help them run for office, you know who you are, what would they do?
Feel free to go to my website, www.inkwellc g dot com. That's I-N-K-W-E-L-L-C, as in cat, G as in goat, dot com. Or you can feel free to email me, shannon@inkwellc g dot com, or call me, three ten eight seven oh seventy-five fifty.
Three, what, okay.
Oh, sorry. Three one oh eight seven zero seventy-five fifty.
I was hesitating to have you say it again, because people might call you, but it's all good. So, so much to unpack. I do think they're targeting progressives. I said that. Clearly, that's happened with the district attorney's race, where almost everyone running against incumbent DA Gascon is, works for him. There are prosecutors that are, that don't like the progressive policies, which we, the voters, called for, and they want him out. Now, you can see for yourself, there's a couple that don't fit that category.
Right.
Nathan Hockman and Jeff Chimerinsky come to mind. Chimerinsky is running slightly to the right, so he's not, you know, all the way to the right of George Gascon. And the rest of them are pretty far right and righter, conservative and conservativer.
Right. Yeah, the pendulum shift is very, very interesting, because I think, I think, I think voters, I think to a large extent, it is what we ask for. And then we realize what we're getting, and there is a bit of like a whoa, like, maybe it's too much that voters may be feeling, or that other candidates may think that they can answer that.
Yeah, I mean, look, the, the KBLA Public Policy, Public Safety Survey that we recently released with Evidiris, it shows black people think reform hasn't gone far enough. Now, that may be, that may be different in other communities, you know. People on the West Side may be waking up going, what did I sign up for? Oh, getting rid of anti-blackness? Well, all at once, really? So, yeah, maybe there's buyer's remorse. I really feel like it's these law and order, old-fashioned Pete Wilson-style candidates whipping up, you know, fear mongering, because the, other than the retail theft, which it's, you know, it's not great, but it's not life-threatening most of the time. We're talking about crime being down since the pandemic, and yet everyone's being told to be afraid. And I understand that people have a right to feel safe. I'm not saying that, you know, your, your feelings are not to be honored, but I think a lot of it has, is a strategy. That is a strategy, right? Scare people into voting for me.
Oh, yeah. And I think it's a, I don't like it personally. I think it's horrible. Unfortunately, the reason why they do it is because it works also.
I mean, yeah, that's, I remember the first time Antonio Villarreal also ran for office when they did that, you know, he's a scary Mexican who's friends with drug dealers, and his campaign just tanked. It was like overnight.
Yeah, and it, it, it's horrible that, that people, that people feel that they can do that. I think, you know, there are some consultants who specialize in hit pieces and in negative campaigning. Like I said, if, if it didn't, if it didn't work, I think people wouldn't do it. And unfortunately, it works. And which is why I think it's also critical that we continue to have conversations around politics and public policy and what that means for our communities and for our homes, because I think that's, that is a very natural way to inoculate yourself against negative campaign ads, because you don't get caught up in the sensationalism of what's, of what candidate is saying or not saying, or the accusations, but you can really focus in on what does this mean for me? What does this mean for my children? What does this mean for my kid's school? All of those things are important.
In a huge, huge city and county like Los Angeles, does door knocking still work?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's still, we just don't do it as much. I mean, it's, like I said, the cost of campaigning has risen exponentially. We just don't do it as much.
But we are allowed to volunteer on campaigns. If we go down, we can door knock. They don't have to give you a W two or anything. You can just show up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's still good.
And phone, you know, phone calls still work, text banking still works. You know, let me just say this, for people, when you get a phone call or a text and they're asking you your opinion, don't ignore it. Please give it. I think one of the things that I think that, that we see is that the mainstream media will put out poll numbers, but oftentimes, our opinions are not represented in those because we just don't participate in them. And it's really, really important that we participate. When they ask you, what do you think about this race? What do you think about this issue? Give an opinion.
Okay, so that's interesting. So, I mean, it's one of the reasons why KBLA fifteen eighty is doing polling. We just did one on, on public safety. The newest one is, you know, groundbreaking on environmental issues, and it's all black likely voters in LA County. And we talked about the impacts of pollution and climate change on the community. And it is really interesting. They are views that you don't hear from black voters. We get that there's a direct connection, for example, between environmental justice, social justice, civil rights. Anyone can go see that at kblafifteeneighty dot com. But the point is, when we see these polls and then the results come back so different than the polling, that, that may be one reason. I always thought it was because they mostly call landlines, and landlines are mostly old people. I mean, because, you know.
Calling cell phones now.
Yeah, well, they've never called me, you know, ever, ever, never. But, and, you know, but I'm just saying, I know that they have shifted to technology somewhat because I get a lot more junk calls and stuff. That said, if we're not participating, we're hanging up on the people or not answering the online survey, that, that shows part of the reason why they're skewed, right?
Yep, absolutely.
Is that true of other communities, like Latinos or Asians or young people? Like, who, are there any other communities that en masse say, no, thank you?
I haven't heard that, so I don't know that to be true.
Okay, it's a black thing, as we used to say back in the day.
You know, but I, but I think, but in the excuse that they give, to be honest with you, is, you know, black folk make up such a small percentage of the population. And so when they do a random sampling, they don't need as many of our opinions in order to meet the, the threshold to be able to say, well, we have spoke to.
I think Michael Jackson wrote a song about it.
Yeah.
You know, they don't really care about us.
And so when you get that phone call, as a progressive, as someone who cares, it's critically important that your opinion is counted. Otherwise, guess what? Because we all know that all skinfolk and kinfolk, they're gonna call somebody that may have the same, that meet the same demographics.
And they call Tim Scott twelve times.
Right. Yeah, I mean.
Well, I mean, it's, it's bad news and good news. The bad news is that, yeah, our opinions aren't being reflected. Hopefully, they'll, mainstream media can start coming to KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, because black folks answer when we call. Yay. But the other thing is, like, it's good news because we know that the polling is gonna skew conservative. It's gonna skew anti-black, and that might not reflect. I remember, you know, election after election, I've said, it's the unlikely voters that really are important. We always talk to likely voters, but it's when the unlikely voters, many of them young people, black people, show up, that things change. That's how George Gascon got elected, unlikely voters. That's how that, that's how Eonysis Hernandez, to me, Hugo Soto Martinez, the kind of Nithya Raman, for that matter, the unlikely voters, young people.
That's how Bernie Sanders won California.
Ah, yeah, right, right, right. And that's unpredictable, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, and, you know, I think, you know, and to your point, we, we have to make sure that, that we are talking to folks. We gotta make sure that we continue to get the message out, that we keep our foot on the gas pedal, because the reality is, is that there are people that have a very explicit interest in making sure that our communities are not, that our voices are not heard, and our interests are not met. And they also are the people who oftentimes control that, control that, that narrative. And so we have to kind of recognize the messenger and be able to just kind of ignore it and continue to just kind of do what we're supposed to do. So I do think that it's easy to, to hear, oh, well, such and such is not, is not doing well. Oh, you know, the people say this. Oh, the people say that.
And then we give up and don't vote.
And that's.
Yeah. And that's why I hate when they call races early, or they do this. Even the exit polling, to me, is sus, because, you know, it can make people say, well, I was gonna go vote for Congresswoman Barbara Lee, but they told me it was, you know, that it was a done deal. Or I was gonna go, you know, no, you, you know, no, we, we have to vote regardless, because they'd be wrong a lot. Talking with Shannon Lawrence, and we've got a lot to talk about. It's KBLA fifteen eighty.
Do you support public education? More than thirty-eight thousand educators at United Teachers Los Angeles do too. Together, we have fought for a better public education for our students and communities, and having you on our side has been essential in our fight for better public schools. Together, we will continue to work for public schools with green spaces, more mental health staff, smaller class sizes at every grade level, and a higher investment in the Black Student Achievement Plan. We are UTLA, and you make us stronger.
It's never been faster or easier to be a voter. Look for your vote-by-mail ballot in the mail. Fill it in and drop it off at a mailbox on your way to work, on your daily walk, or when dropping the kids off at school. Save time and vote early. Make a plan to vote at plan.lavote.gov. That's plan.lavote.gov. Brought to you by the Los Angeles County Register.
LADWP is proud to partner with KBLA to share with you how to start the new year without bill worries. We're here to help if you're behind on your bill or need help staying current. Sign up anytime online for level pay to set predictable monthly payments throughout the year, including for past due amounts. You can also check out the special extended pay arrangements of up to forty-eight months to help pay down your bill. If you're a senior or income qualified, you may be eligible for EasySave to receive discounts and also qualify for free and discounted energy and water-saving devices. You can get up to fifteen thousand dollars for past due water and/or sewer bills, and up to three thousand dollars for electric bills. But you gotta act fast. Funding is limited. You can reduce your past due bills and kick off the year right, because here at LADWP, we're here to help. Visit ladwp.com/cares today and find out more.
Hey Californians, are you ready to make your homeownership dreams come true? The California Dream for All Shared Appreciation Loan Program might be for you. First-generation homebuyers can get down payment and closing cost assistance along with a first mortgage to help you unlock the door of your new home. Applications open in April, so talk to an approved lender to see if you're eligible. Find out more at calhfa.ca.gov/dream, or call eight seven seven nine two two five four three two. A message from the California Housing Finance Agency.
We're not for everybody, but we're for everybody. You're listening to KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
And by everybody, we mean you. Eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty. Shannon Lawrence is with me. He's a veteran political staffer. He's worked with elected officials, worked in labor, all countless campaigns, and you can find him online at inkwellc g dot com. LA School Board race has turned into quite a controversial one because, well, we're talking District One. That's the main one I'm focused on, although there's been some controversy in another race as well, because one of our school board candidates, Khalid Al-Alim, he's running for District One to replace George McKenna, and actually had the support of a number of progressives, got in trouble for what he was doing on social media, liking posts that glorify guns, liking pornography posts allegedly, and liking a, a post that was deemed anti-Semitic. What would you tell him if he was your client? And can, can, can a black man, can any candidate bounce back from that?
Well, one, I think it's too close to Election Day to bounce back. I think one of the things that, I mean, especially when, like, your number one supporter and, you know, in terms of the, the, the union pulls their endorsement back, ah, that's tough, right? You know, I would tell him that he needs to scrub his social medias before he runs for office, and I would give that advice to any candidate. You know, you go private, you, you know, you know, I see it a lot like, like being an athlete, right? There's a reality that, you know, when we talk, talk about in this world of NILs, one key component is your social media following, right? You can have your personal Instagram, but you need one for, you need one for your athletic career. And I would say the same for anyone who wants to run for office. If you know you want to run for office, you know, you have to start sanitizing yourself now, because the reality is, is that, is that this notion of keeping it real is also very manufactured. You know, because you do want to be careful what you, what you say to the world, and what you don't say to the world, and what you say to voters, and what you don't say to voters, how you present yourself. It's really, really, really important to be conscious of that. But I also think, to your point earlier, Dominique, about our community, kind of waiting to the last minute, going to the polls, this is why. You know, I mean, you know, folks got their ballots two weeks ago, and, you know, one thing I think, black folk, that we have, you know, we don't want buyer's remorse, right? We don't, I think one of the things that's clear to us is that we often don't get a lot of bites of the apple. So when we do bite it, we want to make sure it's a good bite. We want to make sure that it's tasty, it's sweet, and that we don't regret it. And so, you know, imagine, and so, you know, you know, in years past, when it was only one day to go vote, you know, candidates had to campaign and, and be conscious about their campaigning up until Election Day. Now, you know, if someone could have voted two weeks ago, now they're like, oh, my goodness, I wish I hadn't voted for that person.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if enough votes are, are in, I mean, conceivably, he could get into the runoff, right?
Right. I mean, and, you know, and voter education, even if you've sent your ballot in, you can still go to a vote center and do a provisional ballot, and they could cancel out the one that you mailed in. But that's just a lot of work to have to do.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I didn't know you could do that. You could actually get a do-over if you have.
I mean, it's not advertised. We don't, don't do that if you don't have to.
Yeah.
You know, do the work, do your research, so you can cast your ballot once, but mistakes do happen. And, you know, the one thing that you, and one thing in a democratic process you don't want to have happen is you don't want people to feel like their, that their voice is not heard the way that, that they want it to be heard.
Yeah, I think that's right. But, yeah, it's, it just throws everything topsy-turvy, I believe. We usually stick local here, but when we come forward, I do want to get your thoughts about the primary on yesterday in Michigan. Trump and Biden both won, but I, there's probably some, some important messages in between that headline. We'll look at that when we come forward. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
KBLA Talk fifteen eighty is an intervention. When we come forward, includes you. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, turning pain into power. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, connecting you with services and solutions. Stay Housed LA has the resources you need to know your rights and the legal support to back them up. The COVID- nineteen pandemic has cost people their jobs and livelihoods. This has left an estimated one-third of households not being able to make rent and facing losing their homes. This is a fear no one in our community should have to face. You have rights, though, and Stay Housed LA is here to help. Stay Housed LA is a partnership between the County of Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, and local community and legal service providers. Together, they provide tenants with the information and support needed to exercise their rights so they can remain safely in their homes. Find out more about your rights by participating in a virtual tenant workshop. Get the legal assistance you need. Find additional resources in Los Angeles County and the City of Los Angeles. Stay connected to Stay Housed LA County for updates, this and more, at stayhousedla.org. Stay connected to Stay Housed LA for updates, this and more, at stayhousedla.org. That's stayhousedla.org. Or call their hotline at two one three six nine four zero zero four zero. We've got your black with a community call to action from KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
The possibility of lung cancer can be pretty scary, especially if you're one of approximately eight million current or former smokers at high risk. That's why SavedByTheScan.org wants you to know that now there's a breakthrough low-dose CT scan that can detect lung cancer early, and it only takes sixty seconds. You stopped smoking, now start screening. For an easy quiz to see if you're eligible, visit SavedByTheScan.org. It could save your life. SavedByTheScan.org is brought to you by the American Lung Association's Lung Force Initiative and the Ad Council.
This is KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, where everybody is somebody and nobody is a stranger. You belong here.
I mean, you know, act locally, think globally, right? I mean, you know, act locally, think globally, right? Well, so I guess the national election isn't, is a local election, even though it was in Michigan. President Biden got 80% of the vote, and, and President, former President Trump easily winning his primary there. Those uncommitted voters, the people protesting the president's failure to call for a ceasefire in Gaza was at 13%. What does that mean to you?
I think, I think people are making their voices heard through this election process in unconventional ways. And I think that that's a good thing. I think, but it also gives, believe it or not, I think it also gives President Biden the political cover to begin to take more progressive stances, because he can say, this is what the people want, right? How soon he does that, I don't know, but also, but, you know, the silver lining in that is that, you know, I think when we elect people, we elect them to represent us, and I don't think we should ever assume that just because we elected them, that we don't hold them accountable.
Right.
And that we don't remind them of what, of what we think on certain issues. That's why it's important, make your voice heard through a vote, you know, write letters, show up to council meetings, or whatever the case may be, because I think they do need to be reminded. Because if we don't remind them, then guess who we'll remind them? Obvious.
Yeah, and, yeah, well, and the other thing is, like I said, you know, off mic, if, if the Green Party ever got 13%, we'd be, you know, it would be like a big, huge deal. It would be on every national news, right? Or if, you know, any third party candidate, Cornel West got 13%, oh my goodness, can you imagine the conversation?
Yeah, and, and can you imagine him on the debate stage?
Well, that would be something, that right there is enough to make me want to vote for him.
Right. I mean, you know, but here's the thing, I do think that those opinions matter. Those perspectives matter in the, in the, in the, in the public discourse, in the conversation. I don't think it needs to be one sided. You know, to your, and to the point you made earlier, you know, the voices of black folk, when we actually are surveyed, can be vastly different from that of mainstream America, and we have to make sure that those voices and those opinions are heard and that they are respected, and that they are taken into consideration when public policy is being made. And the only way you do that is to continue to show up and protest.
I mean, you know, I hate to say I told you so. Actually, I'm lying. I love to say I told you so. But I have, you know, said that I think this, the position that this administration has taken on Gaza and Israel could cost Biden this election. I really think that.
Yeah. Well, let me just say this, though. Who, who would have thought that Richard Pryor and Bruce's millions would be so prophetic? You know, but, but, you know, you're right. I don't know if it would have cost them the election, just because, you know, on the democratic side, there's, there's no real competition. And I think once we get into the.
Well, I'm talking about once we get to the general election. Well, we'll see. I hope I'm wrong.
I can't see Haley or Donald Trump calling for immediate ceasefire. I mean, not.
Good point. They won't, they won't, but what, you know, people may do that uncommitted thing. I mean, or they may decide not to vote at all. And on the top of the ticket, at least, a small margin, it looks like from the polling at least, could make the difference here.
Yeah, and I think the other part that I think is important to remember is that that small part, unfortunately, is not here in California, is going to be in some other places around, around the country. And I think as, as we realize what those purple or those, those battleground cities are, those battleground counties, those battleground states, go through your family reunion directory, and if you've got family in those cities and counties, please call them and tell them to do the right thing.
Georgia on my mind.
Right. And it's really that.
Florida.
Yeah, and it's really that, that important. That, that, that we, especially for our community, for black folk, we have to get back to who we are, and that is where we used to, you know, invite folks to our house and be communal and, and all of that stuff, and talk to people. We got to get back to that if, you know, we can't just assume that because I put it on my Facebook page, that cousin, cousin Larry saw it.
Yeah, it's a great point. Shannon Lawrence, thank you so much for coming in. I appreciate the conversation always.
Thank you so much. I always enjoy it as well.
All right, it's Wealth Building Wednesday, and we're taking your phone calls, all that straight ahead on K B L A Talk 1580.
K B L A 1580 Santa Monica.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. A Republican lawmaker in Alabama has filed a bill that would protect providers of in vitro fertilization. State Senator Tim Nelson filed an I V F bill on Tuesday after the Alabama Supreme Court recently decided that frozen embryos were considered children. At least three Alabama providers have halted the fertility procedure since the ruling. The White House is slamming Donald Trump for suggesting black America.